Same operator of all three, both on fifty-four and Kedron.
Wow.
Jasper, Georgia.
Physically moving to Jasper. Who is this guy?
Um, oh darn, I see, I forget his name. I talk to him all the time. Uh. And see, that was his problem. He got three because of property.
Okay, gentlemen, so that we don't delay public out here.
Sorry.
Go ahead. I would like to call the meeting, many commission meeting for June twenty-sixth to order. Can I give the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of minutes for April the tenth.
Second.
Any, uh...
Had plenty of time to look at.
Alright, so, got a vote?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Um, so, y'all did see the architectural approval for this back in April for Dogtopia. Um, application is for, at this point, a final site plan and landscape plan for that property. So, here on the Q public map, it's right here behind the car wash and Waffle House. It's a one acre tract. They are still, the building is still the same as what was approved in the architectural. It's an eight thousand square foot commercial building with two suites, a five thousand square foot suite and a three thousand square foot suite. Dogtopia's in the five thousand, the three thousand is not yet known at this point who's going to be occupying that space. But the property does lie within the commercial corridor, character area, and the Highway seventy-four overlay. The principal item that was covered for compliance with the overlay district were the architecturals, which were approved and they had submitted those. So, there are some landscaping improvements, but because the property does not directly front Highway seventy-four, those landscaping requirements are a little bit different. We do have much heavier landscaping requirements for properties fronting seventy-four. They have to have a fifty-foot landscape buffer and different things like that. This property does not have that. The other unique item, as was discussed at the last meeting, Barron's Court and Saint Stevens Court are both private roads. So, the property line goes, um, here, let me, up. Plans. You can kind of see the, the property line goes to the middle of the street. So, as a result of that, they do have some, basically, on-street parking, but it's a private street, so that's allowed here in this location as part of their, their development plans. One of the commentaries that we made to them as part of the final site plan was that they needed to place a stop sign here at the corner of Barron's Court and Saint Stevens. There's currently not one, so we would need a stop sign with a stop bar, which is shown here. The site does meet the minimum parking requirements and other site development requirements that we have. Um, and then I'm going to go down to the actual landscape plan. Staff's only comment, and this was not a requirement from staff, but it was a recommendation. Here's their final planting schedule with trees and things. Staff's recommendation was to try and have a little bit more screening of the dumpster enclosure. It was difficult for them to place the dumpster enclosure in an adequate location. It does have frontage on multiple roads, so we would typically have the dumpster enclosure not facing a road, but in this circumstance, that was kind of impossible, given that there was, it had road frontage on three sides. It, they do still have it behind the building. They have some screening from this side, so it's not going to be visible from the adjoining businesses. From the road, there will be some screening with trees planted here and along this side. And also, as you approach coming this direction, they'll have bushes and trees here, so visibility will be, you know, obscured a little bit from this direction, but staff is going to try and recommend if there's any space for landscaping along this edge, for them to try and accomplish a little bit of landscape screening in that location, just to try and, just get a little bit more screening if possible. It's not part of our landscaping requirements, so it is just a, an ask from staff, as it is very tight, just to see during construction if that's possible. But staff does recommend approval of the final site plan and landscape plan. And all of the technical review committee members have reviewed it and issued their approval.
Philip, wasn't there a question about the stormwater?
Yeah, so, um, they had, they, they provided all of their calculations for stormwater in this location. The only question was how and where they were going to place a BMP, you know, on the site. It was really tight. They had originally said that they were going to try and do some pervious parking pavers here, but after taking a look at the hydro flows, it just was not going to capture a whole lot of water. So, what they have is a, kind of a, it's kind of like a grease oil separator unit that's underground. So, they'll have a, they'll have an inlet in this location. It'll capture water, and it will go through this device to clean the water for, for those purposes. So, it's an underground structure. It is one of those items that they are typically used when, when sites are tight. It's not going to be visible, but it is going to be a water quality treatment option that they've done, and our, Scott has reviewed that, our engineer, and then Devon as well prior to her departure from the town, so.
So, it hit, any runoff heads toward seventy-four, doesn't it?
Yeah, so, it's going to go, it's going to go in here, it's going to go underground, and yes, it eventually makes its way across Highway seventy-four. That's where detention is. But they provided their, their calculations, and it did not exceed what those facilities were designed for.
Water flow on that property sort of flows to that area?
Yes, correct.
So, the existing, and I'm glad you asked that question, because that was my question, the existing facility behind Publix. That's where the water will be treated? There's some type of system there?
So, the, it'll go through water quality treatment here on-site, a good portion of it will. The storage of the water, so all the runoff in terms of stormwater detention will be at that, handled at that site. And so, the calculations were given for that particular pond behind Publix, which was, that was what was used as understanding the appropriate calculations for water.
Because there've been questions and problems and stuff with that ancient pub, behind Publix anyway, so what will this, what will be the impact?
Well, I mean, from an engineering perspective, it's, the impact, you know, will obviously have an increased impact on that, that facility, but from an engineering calculation perspective for flows, it was proven that it could hand, that facility could handle the stormwater runoff. That facility was designed for these, all of these lots to be developed. So, it's not, it's not exceeding what was originally designed for this site as it pertains to that facility. And so, that was part of their, their hydro. And we also, we've recorded as a part of this, a stormwater maintenance agreement. I mean, it's recorded at the courthouse, so they do have legal obligation to do maintenance or participate in the maintenance of their stormwater for that facility as part of their development here. And that, that was, that has been recorded. We, we now, as part of our best practice, we make sure that that gets fully recorded before we approve any site plans for development purposes, so.
What, what, what does, I guess, that maintenance of their stormwater, or, you know, somehow participating that, in that, what does that necessarily mean? Is it like the, I know you said they're doing some kind of cleanup on their, on-site with something they have, like a oil and water separator, but does that, that extend to where their water eventually ends up, or I guess?
They would have some, they would have some obligation there, yeah. So, it's supposed to be managed by the, all of the individual property owners that contribute stormwater to that facility, so they, they, they don't have sole responsibility, but they do, as a part of that stormwater maintenance agreement, they do have now legal obligation to some, their share of maintenance associated with that. That goes, that-
Would tell them that this isn't right, you need to-
That gives us the authority to, to basically hope, you know, through our code enforcement powers to hold them responsible. If, if that facility is out of compliance, then we can track ownership through the stormwa, the respective stormwater maintenance agreements that are present. We can track ownership of that pond, and we can, we can say, you know, X, Y, and Z needs to be done. Now, in terms of brokering the share and, and distribution of, you know, how that gets done, that, that still has to happen privately, but we can still say, it's incumbent upon you owners that have maintenance obligation, it's incumbent upon you to fix this. So, get together and fix it, kind of thing. So, that's what that stormwater maintenance agreement legally binds them to do, and that's recorded at the courthouse. And for any future owners, so if Dogtopia's no longer here and somebody new, it runs with the land. Yes, sir.
Hey, Philip, uh, getting back to the dumpster.
Yes.
What kind of, is it going to be like wooden around it, or is it going to be a wall?
It should be a wall. It'll be a brick enclosed, so that's part of the screening that will help as well. That's why I did not have, it, it wasn't in the ordinance to have it as a requirement, but it was just a suggestion, because it will be a brick, it'll be a brick enclosure that will match the building, so it won't be terribly unsightly. We just try to screen those to the best and highest degree possible. It will sit much, also much lower than the roadway, so a lot of those trees that are closer to the road, they will provide actually pretty decent screening, because there's quite a bit of topographic change that occurs. So, the canopy of those trees will actually kind of screen a lot of the view into the site, because they'll be-
I see they're, they're planning for thirty-seven parking spaces.
Yes.
How does that look in terms of lining up with this eight thousand square foot?
Yeah, so, the parking calculation is based on business type. So, we have a general business has a certain number of spaces per square foot, and that, and that's an ordinance requirement, and that's what was used in the calculation. I believe they actually have two, maybe two more spaces than is necessary, two or three, but they're allowed to go over the minimum requirement. They're just not allowed to go under without, you know, either variance or some other special ordinance exception, which we do have in some circumstances. But in this circumstance, they met the general business type. That being the case, when they come to get an occupational tax, if it's not a general business, so, there are, in the parking ordinance, there are a lot of different business types. If there is a business type that comes in, that's not part of general business, then the parking there has not been met for that business type. Let's just say it's a professional office, like medical office, which typically has a little bit higher parking requirement. So, if medical office were to go in and they did not have the adequate number of spaces needed, they would need to do one of two things. They'd either need to go find a new space, or they would need to come up with a shared parking agreement that they would bring before the town to say, hey, we do have adequate parking, because next door, maybe at Goodwill, they built twenty more spaces than they actually needed. We have a shared parking agreement that allows us to utilize eight of those to meet the minimum requirement. Here it is, and we go forward from there. But they have to build it to a certain standard now, even though they don't know who the tenant is. They assume it's going to be just a, in the ordinance, a general business occupant, and so they just put that, that number of parking spaces for that occupant. But if it's different, we would cross that bridge when we get to it.
Last question. It's unusual. I don't see anyone here.
Yes, sir.
That, for something like this, is this normal for a site, final site plan, a landscape plan, when no one is here at all?
They, they're not required to be here, but it's, it's one of those things where it, I, I do understand that it's typically helpful to have them here. They were here for the conceptual, but yeah.
Uh, question for you, Philip. I, I forget, did we see like, maybe at the last meeting, was there like, the conceptual, did we see like the, the, the building will look like?
Yes, we did. I can try and pull that up.
I, I was trying to understand why, you know, they have like this red outlining here of a wall.
Yeah.
Maybe the rest of it is glass? Is that, is that why?
Yes. Um, here, I can pull up the conceptual approval. This, yeah, this was the, this was the conceptual site plan, so it's, it's very similar. You can see that, that they had impervious parking or pervious parking in this location. We did talk about, you know, some stormwater items there at that meeting, but all of that had been finalized. One of the things that they showed in the conceptual that we didn't require in the final, but we wanted to make sure was taken care of ahead of time, we're showing that turn radii here were adequate for cars to turn in and out, because this parking would be on-street. That's another item I didn't mention. These parking spaces are a couple of feet longer than a typical parking space, so that those cars can pull in and be not interfering with the travel lane. This travel lane is also wider than a typical travel lane, so a typical travel lane's going to be about ten feet, and I believe, I believe these are a little bit wider than that, and then the typical depth of a parking space is eighteen feet. I believe these are twenty or twenty-one feet.
Wings and things.
Yeah, wings and things is up here. Yes, yeah. And then thi, this is the rendering, so this is the, the front elevation. So, this is going to be the suite over here is going to be the smaller suite, and their entrance on the corner. The larger suite will be here with their entrance here. And the architecture pretty much matches the Goodwill, so they're going to choose the same brick, and the overall styling is just, you know, it's a fairly typical kind of contemporary brick building that'll match probably more closely the-
Make a motion to approve the final site plan and landscape plan for one hundred Barron's Court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, consideration to approve a final plat from applicant Jerry Crozier for a property addressed at two-ten Crestwood Road.
So, this is just a simple lot split off of two-ten Crestwood Road. I'll try and zoom out of the map a little bit. So, everybody knows the crossing of Crestwood Road at Highway seventy-four. If you take a right on East Crestwood and you come down, it'll be the second property on your right, and there's a larger undeveloped tract there that fronts seventy-four. And then Mr. and Mrs. Mull own this, it's actually four-point-four acres. The tax map says rounds up to five, but four-point-four acre tract. It's a simple lot split, so they are, they're just splitting it from a yeah, they're splitting it into a three-acre tract and a one-point-four acre tract for the purposes of building an additional home. It does lie within the future character area for estate residential, which encourages low-density residential development, not to exceed one unit per acre on no less than one acre lots. So, the submission is consistent with that. Click on this. So, that's, that's the lot division that they're looking to do, so the owners will live on, still continue to live on this half. The setback requirements and everything are, they are conforming to R-twelve, I'm sorry, R-eighteen standards. So, that has been met as well. And I believe that's it. Staff does recommend approval.
Question items?
Yeah, Philip, how, how, is there just going to be a curb cut to the one acre tract?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do that at the time of construction. They'll coordinate their curb cut. We, we have stricter curb cut requirements for commercial. We don't really have heavy curb cut requirements for residential, but we, we do want to make sure it doesn't interfere with any infrastructure in the right of way, and that would occur at the time of site development, which for residential would not come before you, only commercial comes, non-residential comes before you, but, but staff and the technical review committee would still see. Thank you.
Yeah, motion to approve the final plat, plan for two-ten Crestwood Road.
Second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Staff comments?
Thank you, gentlemen. If you have a few minutes, I'd like to go over some town projects with you, just give you some updates. Nothing that requires your, your approval, but did want to make sure that we kind of covered some of them. Um, the first is the Shamrock Park Pavilion, so that one's the one that's under construction across the street. This is, you know, this is the conceptual rendering for that, and just in axiometric view, just kind of showing you, we'll have, it'll be an open timber frame structure on the inside. There'll be these louvered wood backing on it that will be kind of translucent, so you'll be able to see through it. But we, we had had some discussion about it being completely open on all four sides, which it retains some of that openness, you know, here in these corners, but we did want to make sure that this was something that could be used for events, so there's some sound reflectivity that comes with having somewhat of a backing there. There's a faux chimney. We won't be lighting anything on fire in there, but it'll house all of our electrical panels and and then it'll have a, it'll have a metal roof. The brick that you see here is going to match the brick for the town hall, and it's going to be a good project. So, the site location for it is here in this, well, that's kind of a lot. So, it's going to go in this corner of the park here, you know, the path, the trail kind of goes around the back of it here. There will be a, like a plaza in front of it that will have ADA access here. There'll be steps here, and then this will be a large plaza space, probably around, probably around a thousand square feet, nine-hundred square feet. And that'll just allow for, you know, an open space that's in front of it. The reason it was placed in the corner, because we had previous discussions of where this pavilion would go, there was a lot of talk about it going right in the middle of the park in this location. After getting some professional input from the architects and some landscape architects, they had said, you know, that really would actually kind of, you know, obfuscate the view of the lake, which is a big part of the park, and it would kind of break up the park. When we went out there and we staged, you know, we kind of put some tape out and we outlined, it actually intruded on the lawn a lot more than it looked like on paper. And it really created this space, especially if there was a box here, it really made this space much more narrow, and it made everything on the other side of it feel kind of much, much less utilitarian. So, it really kind of broke up the field in a big way, and it prevented the maximum number of people from being able to see it if there was an event. So, if it was here and people were facing it to kind of, you know, go around it here, you could get maybe about, maybe six or seven hundred people could view whatever was happening at the pavilion from this view. From this view, that opens up to about twenty-seven hundred people. Not that we ever have had that many people in the park, and that might be a nightmare, but it at least maximizes that utility of viewable area to the, to the pavilion. It also gives us better sound reflectivity, because there are trees in this location, along with the backing that we talked about, that would give us good sound reflectivity for that purpose. I've got the planting schedule here as well. Pretty simple landscaping, but not planning on putting any tall trees, just because the idea is to see the building. The building's, you know, an architectural piece that's going to be, you know, attractive in and of itself. So, low plantings, everything you see in green here is just going to be re-sodded grass, but some implanted bushes and low-hanging grasses will kind of be, you know, in these areas here, along with some pedestrian foot lighting. So, nothing that'll be, you know, shining in your face. It's like an evening event, but it'll be, you know, low kind of foot lighting.
Philip, where is the dam?
Yeah, so, I can show you. Okay, so, so the pavilion's going to go here in this area. The dam is back here. So, so it'll be, you know, from the walking trail to the dam, it'll be about two hundred.
That plaza area you were talking about, is that kind of pavers or concrete?
It'll be concrete, yeah. It's, it's not, it's going to be light vehicular rated, so if you need to get a work truck on it, but yeah, it'll be, it'll be concrete.
So, the work on the dam, has that already started?
Um, we have a drainage project that we're going to get started soon. We've, we've gotten, I believe, I think we're, if we haven't, if we don't have a contract signed, it'll be signed in, I think, July, for drainage improvements over here on this side of the dam where we have the, the overflow. And then, of course, we've had discussions about the trees coming off the dam.
Yes.
We don't yet have a timeline on the tree removal. It is something that we have budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year, which was just approved prior to this meeting. So, this fiscal year is the only timeline that I have on that right now.
No, there was a big discussion at the council meeting about that dam and the trees and-
I think the idea from a staff perspective is, you know, just because the removal of the trees is going to be a pretty significant aesthetic change to the park. As necessary as the project is from a safety perspective, we do want to try and have a plan for how we're going to improve the aesthetics once that happens. You're not, you're never going to get the same as having trees back there, but having a project that, you know, improves the top of the dam, repaving that path, and maybe having some planters or some fencing, something that we can still be able to provide shade. So, those are some ideas that we're trying to generate. We'd like to have, when we're ready to go with tree removal, we'd like to have the plan for aesthetic improvements come right behind that, so that that all happens at one time, makes it a little bit more palatable. Yes, sir. But we do, we do have a drainage. You'll see work being done, because we'll have this drainage project over here start soon. And, but that's not going to be the tree removal project. Other thoughts, questions, concerns about the pavilion?
When do we start?
It's already started, so you'll, you can see the fencing, it's been, the construction fencing that's put up. I just put out a couple of extra banners for, you know, people to see the architectural and stuff, so they know what's going on. But yeah, it's already started. The anticipated ending date for it, or opening date, is going to be October.
Really?
Trying. This rain has hit us at the worst possible, the founda, trying to get the ground, the grading and the foundation, we've, we've already lost. I had nearly a month of time built into the schedule, and we've already chewed up twenty days of that, so. Just from rain delay, because it's been raining, and then it has to dry out, and then it rains again, and then it has to dry out, so it's been about, it's been over three weeks of rain delay already, so. Fingers crossed, it's going to be finished by- Fingers crossed, it's gonna be finished by Founder's Day. If not, we'll have it pretty. You'll, the building will be, you know, it'll be constructed, you know, about eighty-five percent by Founder's Day. But how we, how we spruce it up, we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out. If it's not safe to, to, we'll pull in the fencing, we'll, we'll have it. But we, we wanted, we, at, at one point, we thought this was the fiftieth anniversary Founder's Day, which that would be really nice to have, you know, it for the fiftieth anniversary, but it's not. It's the forty-ninth anniversary Founder's Day, so glad for that. We will definitely have it done by the fiftieth, yeah. Yeah, I, that, that was, it was, it was causing us to sweat quite a bit. We were like, oh no, we're gonna ruin the fiftieth anniversary Founder's Day if this isn't done. But it, it'll be okay.
Thank you.
Yes. We've got two more for you. The next is the roundabout. So just kinda wanted to have some, some overview, make sure that y'all had any questions answered about the roundabout. This is the location of it. A lot of people are having questions about this section of road, this little squiggly that we currently have, that people don't like over the hill. That, that is getting completely and totally realigned, so that's going away. So you will, coming off of Spencer Lane, it will just be a gradual, normal turn into the roundabout. And then you would go straight, you would still go straight across if, well, around the roundabout, you would not go through the center island. I have to say that, 'cause I've seen that done many times. So yes, but you would go straight across to Spencer. This is, this is going away. This is, this is honestly just going to be green space, so it'll just be an open, you know, landscaped area here. But that's, that's what that's going to be. I have the actual drawings here.
Can I get Southeast Side to remove that asphalt while they're there?
From the old road bed? Yeah, oh yeah, that's going away. Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all going away. I thought I had included the roundabout plans in there. I'll have to, I'll have to go look for those. But that, that graphic there was, that, that pretty much shows the... The plant, the plantings and, we actually have a pretty advanced planting schedule for the roundabout. And these areas here, they're not really delineated, but a lot of the center island areas, you can see, we're gonna have planted in these lane dividers. Normally, those are concrete, so those will, those will actually be planted in this one. And then the apron that is going around the roundabout, so it'll have a center island that is, you know, planted with some trees in the middle and some grasses. We'll also have a welcome to Tyrone entrance sign planted in, or installed there. And the apron is going to be cobblestone, similar to what's at Trilith. The bid alternate for cobblestone as opposed to concrete was actually not that much of an add, so we kept that in. And with the roundabout overall coming in under budget pretty significantly, that seemed to, it'll be a nice aesthetic upgrade for it. So the, well, it'll be a very attractive roundabout, it's kind of the goal there. And then, of course, we'll have a multi-use path that comes across it this direction. So you'll have a twelve-foot wide multi-use path that'll connect from Winfield here in Southampton, and it'll come all the way through. You'll get a rapid flashing beacon protected crossing to go around the roundabout on the, that would be the... Side of the roundabout. And then that'll put you onto the path along Arrowood Road. So that'll, that's gonna be the main connection. So it's not just a roundabout project, it's a roundabout multi-use path and road Spencer Lane realignment project, so it's kind of three projects in one.
Well, that was, you mentioned, I think you did, I think you, that closure of Arrowood.
Yes, Arrowood Road is gonna be closed for approximately, we will make, we'll make an announcement well in advance. It'll be closed for approximately a month during construction at some point. That's the maximum timeframe for it to be closed. So should not affect most travelers, 'cause that's the least, that's the road with the lowest traffic counts. So they will have to go around for that period of time. But it's not, not for the entirety of construction, it's for about, about three or so weeks, they think they'll have to close that. And that was just a major cost savings in being able to do that. There is a routing plan with traffic counts and impact that that could, you know, that could work for a short period of time.
That's the way I go.
Out to eighty-five is going Arrowood.
Yes, sir. Oh, I understand, yeah. Yeah, you'll have, you'll have to take Sonoia, so sorry, sorry about that. It'll just be, it'll just be for a short period of time. It won't be for a whole year or for construction or anything like that. Yeah, well, yeah. That's, yeah, that, no, that was, that was absolutely crazy. That was a utility, just total bungle there, so. Yeah, that's what we've, that's what we've got for the roundabout, so.
For the, for the, you said they're gonna be flashing beacons to cross?
Yes.
On the paths?
Yeah, that'll be at this, this location here, I don't know if you can see that?
Okay.
And here. So you'll get, as a pedestrian, and, yeah, as a pedestrian, you, if you press the flashing beacon, you can get a protected crossing. As a golf cart user, you're still supposed to yield the traffic. That's the official stance for golf carts. Still have to yield the traffic.
But when, when you say that, I mean, the golf cart is still gonna go across the same way a pedestrian does, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if someone's, I've never seen these flashing beacons at a roundabout, I'm just wondering about the person's who, the car that's already inside the roundabout.
Yeah.
How they...
They would have to behave just like, yeah, they would have to behave just like if it was a non-flashing beacon, right? So if there's somebody in the crosswalk, you're always supposed to yield to the pedestrian. So any, any roundabout that has a crosswalk, they're supposed to behave the exact same way. The flashing beacon is just a, it's just a advanced notification that somebody is there. So they are supposed to yield, they will have to stop in the roundabout. That being said, it's, this is a full-sized roundabout, so it's not gonna be a small or mini roundabout where they're gonna have a very short stopping distance. They will have and should have time to react. Those crosswalks are gonna be backset a little bit more. We tried to get some of them offset even more in this process, but just some of the constraints for land acquisition that was gonna start to dig into us having to acquire more property that was a little bit more impactful to do that, so. Engineers did say that this, this was adequate to meet, you know, kind of minimum safety standards in that the flashing beacons would help.
Aye, so it's big enough to handle the semis coming off eighty-five across Palmetto Road?
Yeah, yeah, those aprons are gonna be large enough to handle a semi. And we, there was, you know, there's been a lot of traffic discussions at the county level, town level, about having a no-truck route here. The only, the only issue with that is this, it's actually a little impractical to have a no-truck route in this location. Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's one of the only ways, and they, it really only works if it's a no-truck route in every jurisdiction all the way through. So for our purposes, if we had, if we had this designated as a no, no-truck route, Collinsworth Road is not a no-truck route. So they would get off of the interstate on a legal road, and then what would they need to do? They'd need to turn around, so they'd be using a roundabout to, to get themselves turned around and go the other way. So we really had no choice but to build this to handle an eighteen-wheeler, so, you know.
Put an eighteen-wheeler, do a U-turn, go, come in Palmetto Road, go around it and come back out?
It's designed for them to be able to do that. Yeah, now, they're probably gonna get that, that trailer all up on our apron, but the, yes, it's designed to be able to do that. Yes. Any, any other questions about the roundabout? I know it's a big old project.
Definitely improve the traffic through there.
Yes, yes, we believe so. We're also, we're also in the process of this, this FY, this next FY. We are going to be getting a, I believe we're gonna be going forward on a design for an intersection improvement for a light at Sonoia-Palmetto. Tyrone Road, right there by the railroad tracks right here. So we, we got a traffic stu, we did a traffic study and analysis a year or so ago that recommended, first and foremost, it recommended a realignment and a roundabout. That would be the best flow. We realized that a roundabout that close to a train track would require a signal for preemption purposes. And we then thought, okay, we're gonna have a roundabout with a traffic light in it. I don't, I don't think, I don't think anybody's gonna, they're gonna, their brains are gonna explode. So we, we did the modeling for a, a traffic light, and it did improve service for a good amount of time. So the, the roundabout would preserve level of service for, at an appropriate level for about a fifteen-year span, close to twenty years. A traffic light would do it for about ten, based on growth rates. So the traffic light, I think, is the direction we're gonna go, and we would try and improve it with extra turn lanes. Try and keep and preserve that flow going forward. So we're gonna try and pursue a design on a traffic light there, this next FY. We also wanna try and identify grant funding to construct it as well. And then the very last project, wanted to update y'all on, was the Handley Park, Handley Park Pull Barn. So the guys at, the Public Works guys are outgrowing their current facility that's right here behind the old police station. We've got a lot of new equipment. We have, one of our, one of our guys on staff is an ASE certified mechanic, so he is doing a lot more work on these vehicles and all of, all of, like, even small engine, all of that. He's doing a lot more work on them, and so we just need a facility that's able to house all of the new equipment and secure it, better, better protect it from the elements, 'cause that's really just, you know, it's just a barn back there. So we're building this, this facility here. And I believe it's, it's about an eight, it's about an eight thousand square foot pad, the building itself is gonna be about six. And it'll have two pull-through bays, right here, you kinda see these twenty-foot sections here. It'll have two pull-through bays for them to pull their equipment through and do work on them, store them. And it'll go right next to and adjacent to the existing block building that's back there. So let me pull up a little site plan for you, or, I mean, a little zoomed-out aerial. So if you're familiar with Handley Park, you've got the ball fields, you come in, they're on your left. And then our Public Works guys have a building back here. And so this next build, this new building is gonna go right next to that. It'll be fenced off, and that'll be basically their new kind of headquarters. They'll have all, they'll have all of their stuff. Right now, they go between this facility and the one behind the old PD. This keeps them all consolidated in one. They, you, yeah, you saw that bathroom? They sure did, sir.
Nice.
They'll, they'll get, they'll get, they'll get bathroom facility, and we're gonna run water there for hose bibs on the exterior of this new building. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty simple structure. It'll be a steel frame, all steel building. And it will match, the color will match the existing buildings out there, so it'll have, it's not, doesn't sound attractive when I say it out loud, but it'll have a green roof and a gray exterior, but that's what all of those buildings out there have, so it'll match all the buildings out at Handley Park. I do not have a rendering for it, it's just, it's a pretty fabricated, typical metal building, but it'll be, it'll be fairly large.
Do you have any update on the housing?
Yes, so they had reached out to us with some stormwater, preliminary stormwater questions. So I have seen, it does exist, a full set of civil engineering plans, but they have not officially submitted yet. So they're close, I think they'll probably submit in the next week or so, because I've, they emailed over a full set of engineering plans, civil engineering plans. So I know they're done, but we can't review them without an official submittal. So we told them, we answered their question, we said, you know, if you wanna get a review started, you need to do official submittal. Will take about fifteen to twenty-one days to do a technical review committee review, to make sure that, you know, they're putting in all of the required items. Once they get to that point of getting through TRC or ninety percent, that's when I'll put it before you like I typically. That'll be, that'll be a large, a large subdivision, it'll be kind of similar in terms of site plan review to a, to a site plan, like a commercial site plan. Obviously, there are no buildings, but we're gonna be looking at the street cuts, and we'll be looking at multi-use path connections and different things like that. Will be part of the focus there. And they don't need to have at that time, they'll need to have these prior to construction of the homes. They may have, though, final architecturals for the, for the homes as well. There were some conceptual ones, I think Terry, you have those. There were some conceptual ones that were given for the rezoning, which is all they needed. Prior to construction of the homes, they'll need to give us final architectural samples of the buildings. They don't need it for their civil engineering plans, but they do need it before they get any building permit, so. They see that at a similar time or the same time, or we may.
About the development group across from the fire station? We're gonna allow that, we're gonna up against the clock right now.
Yes, they, well, so they have, they've actually started on their grading. So they, they received their, they received their land disturbance permit, actually, they received their land disturbance permit a long time ago. They are starting to clear currently, yes. We had their, we had a pre-construction meeting with them, and they, they are clearing.
Okay, rock and roll.
They're gonna do two buildings, is gonna be the first phase. They will grade for all five buildings right now. They will do construction on two of those buildings, and they're gonna build the berm and the landscaping first. Probably seen some of them going in back there doing some clearing, they're trying to get access to the environmentally sensitive area, the wetlands down there. They have to do some extra surveying and soil work and geotech work back there. And then, once they figure out exactly what they need back there, you'll start seeing them kind of do mass grading and clear cutting. You can see it from Jenkins Road most clearly.
The data center?
We met with part of their community development team. They, they're a ways away from construction for us. They're about, best estimate, a year and a half to two years from what they consider to be their phase one. Right now, we're kind of in phase zero, but their phase one, which is getting civil engineering plans approved, site plans approved, and starting grading. They are currently finishing up facilities in Palmetto, which is kind of where their schedule is. So if they finish those quicker than they anticipate, then they'll come to us sooner. But I, the best guess, they're not even really giving us timelines, but the, based on what I could infer from them, we're probably eighteen to twenty-four months away from them.
A negative press out there.
Well, yeah, especially since they're not, you know, they, they reaffirm their commitment to actually being here. And they had, they had actually agreed to quarterly meetings with us to just keep us posted on the status. So I, we sit down, we'll be sitting down on a quarterly basis with their public outreach team and sharing updates.
Town's not giving them tax incentives, are they?
I don't believe so.
That's Microsoft.
That's Microsoft. I don't believe there's a tax incentive. The Development Authority was involved in the brokering of the property, but not, not in a tax abatement capacity. I don't think it's enough, it's, it certainly meets the, the gross investment qualification, but I don't believe it meets the job qualification. It's not enough jobs.
Tax revenue from it now that they own it, or?
Uh, yes, 'cause the re, the rezoning increased the value probably. Yes, because the re, the rezoning increased the value probably, so, you know, the, even just as raw land, we'll be collecting, you know, a considerable more, more amount in taxes, because it's now zoned for, you know, Class A light industrial essentially. So, yes, we will be getting increased tax value. Now, that being said, it's still just raw land, so it's not, not exactly a windfall, but yeah.
We're getting something more for it.
Yes, we are, yeah, and we will.
My last, I'm sorry. Philip, Sonic is still becoming a dumping site.
Yes, and here's some news, here's some news for you on the code enforcement front. So with council approved in this, in the new budget for a full-time code enforcement officer, that'll work directly for me. So we will have full-time code enforcement once we fill that position, which I'm going to advertise for tomorrow. So we will, we will have a full-time code enforcement officer that's able to be more hot on the trail for some of these property owners. And I anticipate much better code enforcement services there. But I, I am aware that they've got stuff over there, and I've told our existing contract with Safe Bill, I've told our existing code enforcement officer with Safe Bill that they need to just issue them a citation. There's no, there's no notice or follow-up, we've done plenty of that. So they should just be getting a citation at the next, you know, scheduled for the next available court date.
Permit?
Motion?
Motion.